...of the Brainerd Public School District Number 181 Board of Education to order. In a hurry, hello and welcome to everybody to our last meeting in this august space before we move back to the Washington Education Services Building next door. Very exciting for four of our board members that have yet to sit at the cool angled table, kids' tables at the end.
You get our risks?
Not quite, but you get chairs with our risks.
Really?
Okay, good enough. All right, well, let's go ahead and start with roll call, please Janet.
Kevin Boils.
Here.
Michelle Bracken.
Here.
DJ Donmeyer.
Here.
Randy Heidman.
Here.
Sarah Spear.
Here.
John Ward.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, and let's rise to the pleasure of the evening.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on to the approval of the agenda as amended, there are quite a few amendments, minor ones to the agenda for tonight. There will be a couple of amendments and recognitions. Under new business, we have an amendment where some attachments were added for the levy information that's in there. Under number four action, code 902, the original board packet that went out had an incorrect attachment for the updated drafts and policies, so that's been corrected. And under informational, in Marty's financial report, there's a couple of additions to that. So with that said, Principal Rusk is in the house with our first recognition of the evening.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Warrior Football Coach, Head Coach Jason Freed. Coach Freed was named Minnesota Viking High School Coach of the Week from the Minnesota Vikings Organization, and also Coach Freed and his staff have led our football team to two victories, one this past Friday night, a huge victory in front of a packed crowd at Don Adamson Field, beating the defending state champs El River in a come-from-behind win. It was a great victory.
I think we should put him in at center for the Vikings this weekend. All right, we do have another amendment with recognitions. It is my honor at this time to present four of my colleagues sitting at this table with their official Warrior pins. Yes. Director Cher, oh, I'm sorry, Michelle Bracken. Director DJ Dondlinger.
Sir.
Director RJ/ Randy Heidman, and Sonny. Director John Ward, congratulations. All right, having conducted our recognitions, we can back up now to what I was supposed to do, which was the approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Sir. We have a motion from Director Ward, and a second from Director Heidman to approve the agenda as amended, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, if you signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. And we will now move on to public input. Here's the statement that I always read before public input. A member of the public can address the board during this time. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Complaints or allegations against students or employees may not be discussed due to data privacy. Complaints or allegations must be submitted in writing to Superintendent Han. The Board of Education and Superintendent will not converse with guests to address the topics discussed at this time. With that said, our first public comment for tonight is Carissa Paulson, please.
It's Carrie.
Yeah, right up at the microphone, please.
Excuse me, I'll talk fast because I've limited time. But my name is Carissa Paulson, and I am a parent of a student in the Brainerd School District. I'm here today to inform the public about a comment that was made at the July 10th school board meeting that led to a complaint. There was a complaint sent to the school board chairperson, and the follow-up is under number 11 on the agenda for tonight. A thorough discussion of every aspect of the complaint may not be available, so I want to summarize the complaint to make sure the public knows the importance of it. At the July school board meeting, there was a comment made suggesting that African-American students are leaving public schools due to an inability to read. This statement coming from one of the school board directors is concerning, disappointing, and unacceptable. Not only does that statement enable harmful stereotypes, but the statement also raises serious questions about discrimination. I was disappointed to see another director chuckle at that comment, and many others failed to speak up. That specific meeting had a lot of discussion about ethics and standards such as what is right and wrong, and it is very disappointing to see so many voices stand up for or against votes, but disregarding keep quiet when there was a comment made about African-American children not being able to read. I believe the entire school board is accountable for not speaking up. Every student, regardless of their race, deserves a fair and inclusive educational environment. I have to deal with discrimination initiatives at the elementary and middle school levels within the district, but I would not have expected a comment like that coming from the school board. The failure of the school board members to take an appropriate action has damaging consequences for the African-American student population and fosters an environment that is unwell needed. The July 10 YouTube video has 1,600 views, and it is my hope that everyone that watched that video, everyone that was sitting in the room that day, and every school board member takes this matter seriously. If you have not seen the video, the start of the conversation regarding the complaint can be found around the three hours, 17 minutes, and 30 seconds mark. To suggest that the statement that was made was meant to mean something else, or that the comment was ill- timed, is absurd. Under no circumstances or under any context could that comment be appropriate, especially coming from someone who votes and makes decisions that have an impact on the children here in this school district. Someone that would make that comment does not belong on this stage board. It is my hope that appropriate measures will be implemented to address the issue, and I hope people in the community, whether it be here or online, will take time to stay to the end of the meeting, to gather follow-up, rock, or send to the school board regarding the comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Margaret. Tony Bauer, please.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to request everyone just take a moment of prayer for the souls of the victims and heroes who gradually died in the Twin Towers 22 years ago today. Dear school board, undeserving of trust, that pretty much sums up this administration in ISD 181. You failed our students during the COVID hysteria. Their test scores and mental health both continue to decline. Your focus on race and gender delusions have not bettered one student, only the Hutches promoting these divisive messages. You have recklessly borrowed against guaranteed long-term facility maintenance, taxpayer-provided funds, for what capricious reasons only God knows. You have paid and will continue to pay enormous amounts of interest on what should have been free money, and now you claim to be running low. Quote, "I feel like we're down to bare bones," unquote, according to Superintendent Han during the Brainerd School Board workshop. And yet, you think the taxpayers are foolish enough to grant you autonomous levy authority? You must be guilty. Do we seem that ignorant to you? You are not only allowed obscene materials to be made available to fifth or eighth graders, you've actually gone out of your way to promote it by writing and following back on intentionally vague and cumbersome policies. You require 12 people to review a book that has been challenged as obscene. All 12 of this committee will have to be provided copies of that book, again at our expense, with generous time allotted to your meeting, evaluating, and discussing what should have been a simple matter for decent, intelligent adults to resolve in a matter of minutes. ISD 181, you are no longer deserving of our trust. You have failed our children academically and emotionally. You have failed taxpayers fiscally, and have been less than honest about why we are in the present situation. Students, citizens, and parents of this community will be well-served to replace the majority of this board in the next election. Thank you.
And Michael Erickson, please.
Thank you. Oh, exactly, a lot of follow-up. I disagree with all sorts. I also want to address the July board meeting and comments that were made. I guess I want to address it as I addressed the board before from a student perspective, okay? And as a perspective of a person of color myself. When students of color hear comments like that, what they hear is, "I'm failing, and it's my fault. I'm not trying hard enough. My family's not good enough." That's what they hear. They don't hear support. They don't hear any backing from anyone, and these kids especially need that back, okay? There was discussion about kids that basically drop out, that homeschooler for whatever reasons. The vast majority of those kids that drop out, regardless of race or color, you know, that's the common denominator. They're poor, whether they're white, or they're some ethnic background, they're poor. And the board has a training, an ACE's training, you know, their family backgrounds, their ACE's scores are off the charts. You know, that's the common denominator for these families. It's not just that they can't read. Just that they can't read is a simplistic answer to an extremely complicated situation. And if one tries to boil it down to just that statement, I believe it implies an implicit bias situation because it disregards all the other situations that create that matter, and I believe it's an extremely racist comment because once again, you are prejudging people. And I would put that same comment in whether it's because someone's a Jew, because someone's an LGBTQ, or whatever else makes a person different within the boundaries of the school system. Because those are the ones that feel marginalized, and those are often the ones that drop out of school.
Thank you. All right, we will move on now to the approval of the minutes from our prior meeting on August 14th, please.
I'll make a motion for a minute on August 14th. Second.
We have a motion from Director Bracken, and a second from Director Spear to approve the regular school board meeting minutes from August 14th, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the consent calendar.
I give you a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Director Donmeyer, and a second from Director Spear to approve the consent calendar as presented, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, Mr. Erickson. Would you come down and join us and give us a coming home concert update, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, coming home, coming home concert is homecoming concert. And this is the update, but I need to say what the background is a little bit so I can give you the update as well. I attended a concert, a choir concert by the Acapella Choir in May of this year, and was very impressed by the end of the concert, Brian Stubbs, the choir director, bringing onto the stage all prior Acapella singers. They were dressed casually, you might imagine, to go along with the very well-dressed Acapella singers. It was a very moving experience, this is in the GZ, extremely, the audience was very much with them. It's an extraordinary time. I left that concert bearing in mind that Director, pardon me, Superintendent Han had said some months ago that in the homecoming period, we needed to find ways to bring the community together, given all things. And I could see that the human voice sung from deep within side of people, including some who perhaps say they can't sing, but probably could if they gave it a try, had remarkable abilities to bring people together on one subject, the song, even though they came from disparate backgrounds, of which there are many. So I took that subject up with Brian Stubbs, and he agreed that we would put together a concert a couple of months later at homecoming. Three months later, we are approaching that date, September 30th, at the GZ at 7:00 PM, and the concert has, as its heart, people from the community, they don't need to be graduates of Brainerd Public School, they don't need to be Acapella singers from anywhere, they don't need to be church choir singers. All they need to be able to do is sing in the shower or in a reasonable facsimile thereof. And if they can't do that, as I'm told that Director Ward possibly can't, they can try and until the director, the conductor says that's enough, then they can just stand there and mouth the music. At this point, we started with no choir singers. Mr. Stubbs has a ready-made choir, the Acapella students that he has, and so he started with them. They totaled 69, I have that number ready, 69 at the beginning of school. Thirty days later, they're singing this concert. We had zero from the community when we started. We made an effort to reach out to the community, a lot of communicating to the community. Thank you to Brainerd Dispatch as well for that. The report today is that we have 71 members of this community and other communities who wish to sing in that pickup choir on September 30th. They come from as far away as New York because they are graduates and related to graduates. And we have two special ones coming from Vienna, Austria, and Alaska. The two special ones are the two children of Kurt Hansen, our legendary choir director who went on to found the American Oral Directors Association and enter its Hall of Fame. Now 22,000 people, that's the leading Oral Directors Association in America. And he started, you know, for all intents and purposes here. We are not done with getting people on stage. If there's anyone in this audience that's interested in singing, there is a sheet to be filled out online, you can find it by going to Brainerd Public Schools Archives or Brainerd Choir. Complete that, and you're in. You don't have to audition, you don't have to do anything. And you can come exactly the way you are all dressed right now. You don't have to dress up a bit. You just come and sing. You sing with your community friends, those who you may disagree with in the community, but you come on stage and you sing. You do that for an hour. Some of you will never get on that stage again, especially in this beautiful state-of-the-art facility that the taxpayers of Brainerd Public School District Number 181 have provided, which allows us to do so many things, including streaming that music, that soulful music around the world into our community. One last word, we have a remarkable situation here in that we will be bringing into the concert hall all of the conductors who have been the directors of Brainerd Public School Choirs since Kurt Hansen left here in the mid-1960s. Everyone but through one. So there are a half dozen, roughly speaking. Each one will conduct one piece that they've selected. And I encourage people to come, it's free. We will ask for, if anybody is able to, a free will offering, but it is free, it's not ticketed, 7:00 PM on the 30th of September. There are only two rehearsals, one of which is not required, although I would strongly suggest that Director Ward be there, and one that is required, and that's the afternoon of the concert, so it's all very seamless. It will be, I think, quite a unique experience, and I hope, I hope, that it will become a tradition. Homecomings have, as there are traditions now going back over 100 years in this country, a concert of some sort. It's hard to pull that together, but with the voice being the soul of the concert, the soul of the event, maybe the soul of homecoming week, and the engagement of the community all together, everyone on one stage, I can't think of anything better. We want to do it again. Thank you very much.
Before you go, there's one information. If Director Ward attends this rehearsal, is the costume okay?
I photographed the costume, but I don't know that it was a costume, but I think that's probably just part of his repertoire. I have, I have an art, I have his hats, which are remarkable, although I think he moved a bit further with the hairdo this time. But I think if Director Ward is going to be singing, whether he's in his park as Sonny, he can't do it without Cher being there. When Cher is present, nobody knows who she is because she is so garbed up.
I sense a motion coming later in the evening, thanks.
Please, we need more. I understand Director Donmeyer is going to be out of the stage at that time, otherwise I would shank high and get him on the stage because I suspect there's no other way I'll ever get him.
How'd you know? You told me. Right, I look.
I appreciate it.
Thanks a lot, John. All right, we'll move on to new business then. This is one of the amended items, we'll bring, Marty, if you want to come up, we'll give you per the February 2023, 2024 proposed tax levy of maximum, please. So.
So in your document, or in your agenda, is a link to your document that goes into more detail, so this presentation is just a shortened version. We will be presenting the first report that came out on last Friday, and asking for the maximum help due through the county analysis tax statements in November, but post-tax statements, excuse me, and then in December 11th, there's a public hearing on final levy and service fees. So this is just the timeline of the levy process for us. So the 2024 post-tax levy, the sale tax payable is, tax is payable in 2024 and recognized in 2425, so I know it seems weird, but it's actually for the budget that is almost two years old, but that's how it works for school districts. The majority of the limits are based on enrollment, so we put in our estimates for 20324 and then 2425, which is on the chart below. And right now, the whole tax increase to 3.6%. And the MBE runs many reports up until September 30th, and so that number could fluctuate, and that's why we're asking the board for the maximum, because if that does change, then you will process what the maximum is at that time. This is just a breakout of the levy by fund, so the majority of it is debt service, and the next chunk is the general fund at 35%, and then community service at 2%. And this didn't change from last year, so it was the exact same chart, pie chart, as last year, FYI. And then this is the levy by fund history, so you can see we've had percentage change ranging from as low as .44 all the way up to 19.42, and then the five-year average is 2.38, and the 10-year is 4.82, and we're at that 3.6, FYI. And you'll see too that the whole tab debt service has since fallen off, so that debt has, was paid off, and so we no longer levy for that debt.
Can you back up to Sonny's? Okay, thank you.
And then this is the general fund by category, so this was, I can back up a little bit, this was presented to the finance meeting, and I did go through this document in more detail just so that everyone or the committee members were aware of what we levy for, if it's a maximum, what that makes out. So this is a breakout of the general fund, each category, you'll see that there's lines that say adjustments. So how the levy works is you may levy for $30,000 in unemployment, but you don't actually, there may be an adjustment if in that year you spent $45,000, so the adjustment would be $15,000 down the road, once the state sees what we actually spent. So you'll see that in several of the categories. For enrollment, if our levy was 1.5 million, and then our enrollment was up or down, there would be an adjustment to adjust that. The main one that I, or the couple I'll highlight, is the unemployment, that is one that I can actually enter. A lot of these other limits are statute, and so they're calculated by MBE and then shared with us on the record. All the other funds, the community service fund, this one, I don't know if you recall, back in June, there was a request to adjust the population for, based on the actual population instead of the necessary, and we do that, so you see there's an increase in the basic community ed allocation, and then, just like in the general fund, there's adjustments from prior years, and then the other categories. And the other item that I can manually enter what the amount is is the school age tier, that's for after-school care for kids with disabilities. The general debt service, that is based on our principal interest payments, so we can levy for 105% of our principal interest payments. And then there's a reduction for debt excess line item, that is, if we get above that 5%, then the MBE does encapsulation and focuses on that money back, similar to an adjustment. And then, as I said, the whole tab debt service, that one is going away, so you'll see adjustments that'll follow in a couple of years, but eventually that will no longer be a line on the levy. This is a chart of our outstanding debt service, so it starts with 2018A, which is the Blueport 2011 project, and then you can see we have issued bonds since then, and our most recent one, the 2023A, is on there as well, and it goes through 2044.
Marty?
Yeah?
Just outstanding debt service, I just need a rough. The gray category, that's the board approved for 204 million, correct?
Sure. So that's just one piece of the 2025. The 2018C, the blue, the green, the yellow, all of those actually relate to Blueport 2011 minus the 2021A, that was the refunding.
Many of these categories include the long-term facility maintenance bonds?
Yes, so the ones that are titled facility maintenance deal with the long-term facility maintenance arrangement.
So the agenda column?
The green and the magenta and yellow.
And the orange?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and those were not board approved, correct?
Right, the board had the authority to issue those, and it was part of the Blueport 2011 plan.
And I was not heard of the board at the time, but what was the purpose of issuing these long-term facility maintenance bonds?
So when we have a survey done of what our needs were, it was to try to target that 205 million magic number that the communities that they would support, and it was a combination of LGFM bonds, GRO, board approved bonds, LGFM is regular funding, it wasn't just the bonds, so between all of that, we're going to support that.
I'm not, I'm not blaming you, I'm just asking questions, I got it all in my head around this. So those four areas, the facilities, maintenance bonds, those were board approved?
Correct.
And how are those being paid back?
So that is all part of the levy. So we're paying back with our levy. On the debt service portion, we're making that. This general debt service that's in the green, we're making payments with our debt service levy.
Okay. Do we, do we not get funds from the state on an annual, an annual basis for maintaining our buildings?
Yes, and that's separate, so that is not regarding bonds, it's just separate allocation that we get funding for.
We get that money from the state? Okay, and then that money goes into the general fund?
Correct.
And is that used to pay bonds?
The levy dollars goes into the debt service fund to make the debt payments. And then the funds that you're referring to goes into the general fund.
Okay. But as a fact.
And building on what you said, Director Hyman, nobody on this board was on the board. Maybe this was a curfew by the school board, just a record.
What, the 2023?
What? I mean, I'm just big for others. Well, I'm talking about the original issuance of the bonds and all that stuff during the Blueprint 181 approvals and all of that stuff.
Is this all the debt?
This is everything.
All the debt, it's closure type?
Minus leases. We do not have leases.
Well, leases aren't debt because you're different. Right? So you're, oh.
Sure.
This is all CPA.
This is all our fund. This is all of our funded debt. This should change that slightly.
So let me ask.
So what percent of, I think that you're asking, right? What percent of our LTFM money is going to pay back to these debts? So we know that we've got about $800,000 a year. We know this is a problem. Take the, take Director Hyman, you know, make us all feel more comfortable. You know, do we get $2 million? And then how much money goes towards it? Is it $4 million? Is it $6 million? What percent is it?
It changes every year depending on the debt payment and our enrollment.
So give us a close what it was last.
It was around that 800 that went into the LTFM. Or 1.9, 1.9?
That's from the state base?
Yeah.
So in other words, if we didn't have this, then maybe I'll take this levy money and put it into LTFM?
No, no.
So how do we fix the LTFM problem?
Good question. We're researching other options at this point, trying to find another solution.
I thought that we were in that LTFM meeting and there was like a number of $6 million, then there was $2.25 million something. So there was like four left. And then by the time we shook out all these debt service statements, we ended up with $825,000.
For next, for next year.
For next year. So the state used to give us more and now they're giving us less?
Well, because of the debt department. So we incorporated that into our plan. And again, I wasn't a part of that either, executing it. So that plan we had that that debt was going to be a part of the funding. And so it does reduce what we can spend on our projects currently.
That, that debt money is the same money that's coming in this levy?
Correct.
Which is the same levy as we had last year? Basically?
Yes.
And the year before, the year before?
It did go up last year, the debt department, but otherwise from last year.
And this is what people voted on?
They voted on the gray column, right?
Well, they voted on the gray, a whole bunch of them.
Yeah.
Right, but, but the long-term facilities maintenance bonds. And again, none of us were on the board. You weren't here to see either. Did the board approve those? Because it was going to be easier to sell a $204 million referendum and a $157,000 house, taxes being about, what is it a year?
$7.
$7 a month. They didn't want to improve that. They didn't think they could get it through, right?
Right.
Is my understanding.
Correct.
So now we have to pay this and?
This one I thought was very interesting. So last year, I don't know if you guys, if you've got all of your thoughts, but there was, some people were seeing quite a change in their market values. And it's always a year behind. So right now, I don't have the 22, 23 market value. This is the, the most recent data. And you can see from 21, 22, the market value jumped 7.8% increase to 33%. So that's, that's what our, our community was seeing from market value increases. The referendum market value, so that's used primarily for referendum and equity levies. You can see that that went up by 29, 22%. And then the net tax capacity, we've had conversations about this at a recent board retreat. That's for the building and capital project levies. So the Blueprint 181 would have been on the net tax capacity. That was also an increase of 33.4%. So not really sure what those numbers will look like for 22, 23, but there was a substantial increase from last year. Any questions on this?
So just rough numbers. What's our board each paying for each one?
So we make debt payments twice a year, August and February. And February, we then got an interest.
I mean, I'm kind of annoyed with asking the question because I understand a mortgage payment.
Yeah.
And I'm sure if we have a mortgage payment, we call this up different.
Yes.
Okay.
So the administrative recommendation is to approve the maximum amount that the laws could change this from now until September period. And then in December, we'll be a public hearing where the public can comment and comment. And you guys will then, you have the opportunity, you decide if you can approve the levy limit. And then also just an F R I. So we can set the maximum now, but we can't go above that in December. We can go lower, but we can't go above it. Any questions?
So this is an annual thing. So this has to be done every year. And we have to have it entered to the state by the 30th of September. We just had a meeting on force on all of the data. But I think it's important that, you know, for sure, other one in the board and, you know, the public kind of understand that this is a renewal every year. So this isn't like, this isn't going to change those taxes that you're in normal economy or cities taxes are going to change. Is that true?
So when they get their, the biggest thing when people call, you know, about their statements is I try to point out the market value. Because a lot of times, the school district portion may say it's more than 3.6% than what I'm presenting. Like it's because their market value changed, not because the school district is asking for more money. And that doesn't, that doesn't give the district more money. It just changes the shape of the pie. So if your, your market value went up more than your neighbors, you're paying more taxes. But that doesn't mean the district gets more money.
So here's a simple question. Is these property values, which is crazy to think that COVID economy, or it's not just COVID economy. There's some gas and there's some more, so I believe.
Yeah.
But at eight and a half billion dollars, what the assessed values were 22, which just seems crazy to think we have billions of dollars in central Minnesota. But they're up 33%. So let me think those property taxes are going to go 33%. And they are going to go 33%. I'm currently running free.
So it goes back to, yes, their property taxes may go up, but then somebody else's may go down. So like your property value may go up 33%, but then the person next to you might go up 12%. So they're going to probably actually see an increase in their taxes. And that's based on the value of that home? Exactly.
With the levy?
With the levy.
The levy is what screws it up. So your value also went up 12%, but your taxes actually went down.
Well, think of the levy as a fixed number. It's an aggregate dollar. And then the way that it's slivered out depends on how the value shifts from your home to my home to my home. So DJ pays more than me because his home keeps going up and I?
I just don't understand how the value goes up, the taxes go up, but then I hear that they go down. It's, 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 yeah, it's just beautiful. It's all about the, Kevin said it's a fixed amount. And it's just spread, how it's spread out over this E. Well, it's not spread over the E, it's not given the R and B and the NTC and all these other categories, how they figure this out. But basically, we're just kind of renewing the levy that we're, for 2003.
Again, for the benefit of people watching, the idea is to give us the temporary flexibility by approving the maximum tonight to maneuver within that between now and the end of the year. Depending on how the taxable numbers shake out, we get more data and more information. We don't have to do it. But if we don't do it tonight, then we can't do it later.
Exactly.
I'll move the, I'll be preliminary tax levy at 3.60.
So that's the maximum.
You're asking for the max.
The maximum.
Yeah.
Okay, to the maximum. So what I have?
My second.
We have a motion for Director Ward, second from Director Brecken, to approve the preliminary 2022 payable 2023 post-tax levy at the maximum amount as presented by Mercy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Who carries? Thank you, Mercy. Next is Dr. Han with the termination of the Brainerd SRO contract.
Yes, so what we have before you is a termination agreement that was drafted by the city of Brainerd requesting withdrawal from their current agreement. They have an SRO officer located at Brainerd High School. We've had lots of communication over the last three or four weeks. I'm very grateful to our chief of police of both Brainerd and Baxter, as well as the city administrators of Brainerd and Baxter, that they've been working diligently to navigate this, this situation. All agencies, including the district, have sought legal counsel to try to do their best to interpret the current situation. At this time, the recommendation that was voted unanimously by the city of Brainerd was to withdraw from their current SRO agreement that's in place. That being said, we do have commitment from Chief Davis and the city of Brainerd that they will make sure that there's a physical presence around the building, that they have somebody that's assigned to respond. And then we'll have officers in that pattern. So at this time, Brainerd is asking for that withdrawal.
So the specific action item is to permit the city of Brainerd to withdraw from the SRO contract that we approved back in spring, correct?
Correct.
I was also fortunate enough to sit in on the meeting with Dr. Han and the chiefs of police from Brainerd and Baxter. And what I can say is it's a, it's a group of very well-intended people trying to make the most of a really, really messy situation that was thrust upon us by our good friends down in St. Paul, it again. So my thanks and the board's thanks to Chief Exton and Chief Davis for their efforts in this, as well as you, Dr. Han. You guys did excellent work to try to find the best possible solution to this. Since I was in that meeting, and just to expound on it, I would, I would recommend obviously to people in favor of allowing them to withdraw from the contract. And then, I think that's all I have before we indicate motion.
I'll make a motion.
My second.
We have a motion from Director Donlenger, second from Director Spear, to approve the termination of the Brainerd SRO contract. We're going to discuss it.
Mr. Chair, Director Ward?
Thank you. I am pleased that the last sentence in the agreement, it says, in the event the statute refers to Bob, our amendment, the parties agree to discuss whether a new resource, new school resource officer really would benefit the parties. So just so that the public and the board and everybody knows that if this gets worked out, we can go back to the table and look at another agreement with, for the SRO student resource officer. I've gotten a number of emails on it, and I totally agree with the number of emails that I've gotten. They stating that the security of our children, safety of our children is at hand here. And the governor and the legislature is dropping the ball no matter what. I've got, I've got, I've got another motion I'll make after this one, after we've won this one. But it, it is very irritating to me that a political football comes before our children's safety and our children's security in our schools. And I'll, I'll just state that for now. I'll save some outcomes in a minute. I want to, I want to make sure that we knew that the agreement was.
As you said, I'll, I'll come back to you after we process this motion. Director Hyman?
A question for Dr. Han. We're, we're stating that for Brainerd, no, not Baxter, because Baxter hasn't changed. There's going to be a physical presence seen around the school, but not in the buildings.
Correct, so when we place the officer.
Why? Why not encourage them to come into the building as a visitor on a periodic basis just to have presence within the school? Would they be in favor of, I mean, first of all, are we, would we like to see that? Would they even do it? Because, I mean, anybody can walk into our school as a visitor.
So correct.
And certainly, we're not going to tell a police officer that you can't be in here.
So I think there's, there's been lots of career talks about how to problem solve around the statutory change. And that was definitely one that was discussed. Legal advisement that was given back to the city was that the minute you step into this school building, you're acting in the sense and essence of a school resource officer. So again, I think Chief Davis and, and our officers are doing their best to make sure that they're in that close proximity, they're seen, they're responding. Same thing, they're at events typically, there's a contract to have them at events. The minute there's any exchange or an invoice, then it's engaging in a contract. Therefore, then the statutory change applies. And that liability and that risk, in consultation with the city of Brainerd's legal counsel, they chose that it was better to go to this route. And then to respond like they do to any other projects.
And I'll be making a comment later on in the meeting as well. And I'm going to make a few as well. I think kids look at these folks as relationship builders, et cetera. And I think there's also a sense of a little safety. And, you know, when kids are safe, they learn that. And so it really would be nice to get this issue resolved for everyone's sake.
Director Donlenger?
So when this first arrived, I was concerned about it. And actually, like 10 days ago or something, I started thinking about this. And if the police still want their officers in here, do we feel as though we have liability issue with our teachers, educators, parents, all of our, I mean, if I'm a, if I'm a cook and somebody's going crazy, can I stop them? Or do I have any options? Because everything's been about the police and they have done. And so I'm kind of concerned about our staff. And I'm sure you're addressing this, but I think that we probably should word out what we're doing. And how are we going to, I know it's not an easy thing. It's kind of crazy. We're hoping that the legislature will come to their senses and straighten this out. But like, how are the teachers supposed to protect themselves and protect our, our assets? Stuff that we, that is going to come down from maximum levy that we buy, run these schools. Now, kids in a bad mood, they can destroy a bunch of stuff. And no one can really do anything to try to calm them down. How you sound just moves today, it's next to other hand. But, you know, I mean, if you address the staff, I know you guys had your thing with Sonny Cher. I heard about it. I was out of town. And I heard that went pretty well. But did you guys address that deal? Is that what happened or?
We can address it with the public sentiment. But what we do every, there's a safety plan in place in every building that our administration needs. And the statute and the rights we have is if there's an emergency interview, right? So when we look at all these rules and things that apply, if something's going on, there's a fight happening between two students, staff are going to interview. So there is the grounds to interview. We do have specialized training. So we have programs that are approved and we train specific staff to interview. So we have some students might have some special needs or situations where that might require more than interview. And so we have a specific pocket of staff that are trained to respond to that. New this year and trying to respond, we've added additional staff at Forest View and the high school just to have that presence of walking around, checking in with students, checking in with passes just to make sure that there's more mobility, observation students try to monitor some of that in interview. And I think Director Hyman, it correctly, it's all about relationships. It's about a relationship with our students. It's about knowing those students. It's about knowing their triggers, what's going to happen. And we're going to be adding that with the. So then the events and the interviews that you mentioned does occur. Do a special string for more specific.
It's pretty crazy when you think about these, these congresspeople and their governor signees. So the police can say, oh, we're out. But what are we supposed to do? So we're, we're handcuffed. They have no options apparently. But the police is the big worry. It's all over the news, all over the news. And I don't know. I don't like it. And, I don't know, I don't like it. If you've got some spare time on your hands, don't be afraid to send an email to your congresspeople, governors, because I don't think it's a fair thing for our haters, or our cooks, or our custodians, or our administrators, or things to be straightened out. There we go.
Mr. Chair. I did, thank you. I had the opportunity to, I've had a number of meetings in the town lately, and driven by the school, and I want, I want the public and the board to know, and the administration to know that I've seen the police outside the building, their presence has been known, I've seen it, and it's during the critical times that, and first of all, we strongly say for our enforcement, for the tough job that they're doing. But it is, it has been noted by me that they have been very visible around buildings, at the high school. I haven't been able to be able to, like, force it yet, but I just wanted to make that clear, that they're around, they're definitely around, and we appreciate that. It's good to be better when we get this thing fixed up, but we appreciate what's going on right now.
Thank you, Director Ward.
Where are we?
In further discussion, we have a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And point order to recognize Director Ward.
Thank you, Director Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we, as a board, as a district, but as a board, send a letter, and I would hope that a number of school districts in the state of Minnesota, the 300-plus schools in the state of Minnesota, would do the same thing. I haven't heard of this being done yet, but send a letter to the governor and the Speaker of the House and the President of the Senate, asking them to take action to correct this immediately, as soon as possible, because our students and our children's safety is at risk. And quit playing the political football, and let's get it done. And so I made that as a motion, that we, we, as a board, doesn't necessarily come, I don't think it should come from the administration, I think it should come from the board. And I'd like to get a letter sent out ASAP. That's my motion.
Thank you, Director Ward. So we have a motion from Director Ward to send a letter to the governor, the Speaker of the House, and the President of the Senate. What do you say?
Second.
Second from Director Hyden. Further discussion?
Well, how do we do that? Like, do we have to have a committee, or we can all just get together and do it? Or are we...
Well, all six of us cannot work on it together, because that's a form.
But do we need to talk about that, or...
No, I think we can talk about that.
We probably need to...
And we kind of had a, I wondered in your finance meeting, we kind of talked about this a little ahead of time, just for the benefit of Michelle Sarah. My suggestion would be that we have three board members assigned to work on it with the administration. The only correction I would make to what Director Ward said, pardon me, is I would put the word stern in front of the letter. I don't think we should pull any punches.
No. What word did I use?
You just said a letter.
Oh.
I'm sorry, stern letter.
Absolutely.
Meaning I won't use here tonight, but this is not how you protect the safety of children in your school system.
Absolutely.
No. It's all about politics, and then the kids are caught in the middle, and it's ridiculous.
Ridiculous.
So, that's all I have to say on that.
So, Mr. Chair, would one...
We have volunteers, so Director Ward, is your motion, I suggest that you head up the project, if you're comfortable with that?
Sure. And is the rest of the board okay with the three members to get together with the administration?
Or we're gonna put it in the same motion as yours? So we can just vote on the whole deal?
Right.
Make a motion, do you amend the motion?
Yeah, we'll just amend it.
We'll have the motion that we're gonna write the letter, and that we're gonna assign three people to do the letter, and we're just gonna have to live with it.
I'll accept that. Second.
I second that as well. Okay, so amended as stated by Director Donnelly.
I'll work, Janet. We have it all screwed up.
No, it's fine.
I'm sure there's probably two or three parliamentarians on this group right now.
Sorry, are there volunteers, or do you have board volunteers?
You're the lead, you're the call of duty, you want to...
All right, very good.
John Ward's the lead as part of the motion. All right, so you got a second?
Yeah, it sounds good. All right, so the motion, as amended, is to have Director Ward lead a group of three board members to work with the administration to draft a stern letter to the governor, the secretary, excuse me, the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House of Minnesota Legislature, requesting immediate action on this issue.
Can I ask one more question that I'll break this off, I think you're gonna be very good job, is, John, does it make any sense to send it to our local representatives?
You know, that's a great, Mr. Chair.
So maybe I get amended the motion for that.
That's a great point, that is absolutely a great point.
Congressman Davis, Hyde Horn, and Beckman, and Krista, and I'm not sure about the ones who are still coming, but it's pretty easy to figure out.
Yeah.
Include them, just give them some...
We'll CC, we'll CC them.
So, the elected officials.
They were the 33rd largest schools in the state. I would think that it would have a few or something.
Maybe I'll start a little bit of a grass fire.
Hopefully.
I really do hope that over 300 other schools, we send some kind of communication.
Well, after you've got the letter, you get on the phone and start calling them to do this thing handling, we're trying to get our thing done through the repair guy.
All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second on Director Ward's motion that Director Ward lead a group of three board members to work with the administration to draft a sternly worded letter to Minnesota Legislature, as in the President of the Senate, the Speaker of the House, and the governor, as well as all local elected officials in the Minnesota State Legislature within our school district, to get this matter resolved and put the safety of our students first.
Perfect.
Somebody else watch the recording, we record that, but, all right, so any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Director Ward. All right, next, our action item is the approval to have the building and grounds purchasing to advertise for bids for snow removal services for school year 2425.
Okay, well, I hope this doesn't take an amendment or a motion into amendments to get through this one, and it's not a topic that I don't think anybody is fond of here, so really quickly, just because of the dollar amount for this service contract to the school district, it's recommended by our council and our business office to advertise for bids for snow removal services for all of our sites for this coming school year. The previous contracts were right at the statutory threshold where we could receive bids, but at, as costs are increasing and services are going up, we are, we feel it's best just to receive, see a bid for this. So, really what we're just asking for is, just as we did for our construction projects, just to advertise and receive bids for it. We do have an RFP that we have drafted for this, similar to what we issued last time, so we'd like to issue that, and get bids back, and then we bring those bids back for the next board meeting, we're full.
Motion.
All right, we have a motion from Director Donnelly, or the second from Director Spear to approve the building and grounds purchasing to advertise for bids for snow removal for school year 2425. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Director Reed. Director Reed. All right, next, last night, this discussion, discussion on approval of the revised policy 92, Appendix B as presented, Anne Marie. This is amended, if anybody was out on the website, Director Hyden talked this week last night, we have the original policy out there, not the drafts that were reviewed there, the link is correct now, so everybody can see them or should have been able to see them since this morning.
Good evening. So, I did speak a little bit about this in the last school board meeting, last, just a little over a year ago, we changed policy 902 to allow alcohol sales and service at the GZ Center for the Arts. And along with that, we came up with this Appendix B, which outlines the procedures under which that will be allowed to take place. I have two options right now before you. This policy will also set to be reviewed annually, so this would be our annual review, but I have had requests from facility users for a couple of changes to it. The first one, option one, is to eliminate the requirement that this only happens during the summer months, and allow for it to happen year-on, that we may have events serving alcohol year-on, retaining the hours from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. still. The second option is we've also had a request from some of the entities who are hosting the events to be able to serve alcohol themselves rather than contracting with a caterer that we have required as part of the procedure. A couple of examples, Lake City Music Festival had their events this summer, they have to get contemporary liquor license as part of the procedure. They also have to contract with a caterer who has a liquor license. So we're doubling up on their licenses, and then they may have trouble finding a caterer who's going to come in for the small amount that would be sold, or something like that. His request to me was that they would be allowed to serve alcohol themselves potentially. Another example would be, we have a request for, after the new year, JCs are having an event at the GZ Center, they would like to serve alcohol on it if we change the timeline of when we're allowing that, they have a liquor license themselves, however, they are not a caterer, they would want to do the serving themselves, or have to invite other groups to come in and serve alcohol. But the way we have it written right now, they would have to cater, have a liquor license. Those are two examples. I did speak with our district insurance agent, and his, you know, concern is that working with a licensed caterer, they get specific training on serving alcohol, not over-serving, recognizing some of the potential dangers, we'd be removing the ability to ensure that people serving alcohol at our venue are properly trained, so...
I can't imagine why I would do it. I'd do it again.
But do.
But you can't carry it in. So where do they, where do they drink it? And I thought the reason we were doing this is so people like JCs, have type of humanity, whatever, could have an event at the center, GZ, and could have alcohol, but you can't bring it in, you can't buy it afterwards, and it shuts down five minutes before anything starts, and you have to buy insurance and pay for two security guards. How's that ever gonna happen? Or do they have to, say, load up the events, like, in that big, open, like, area out there where they might have a, and they're not gonna use the stage and the seating?
No, no, it's restricted to just the lobby, the foyer, and the upper deck, here and it's up there. It's not allowed inside the auditorium.
But would all the events, it would just be in the foyer and in the same...
We might have, like, a gala, and sure, there's, you know, a meal served in the lobby space, and then they could serve alcohol with it. We do have, like, a kind of pre, like, maybe they might have certain guests that pay to come in early and have mingle time where they would serve alcohol. I believe, like, sort of Music Festival has served it during the intermission, we do have some requirements along the length of the intermission, if they choose to do that, just so we don't have people rushing to finish before they go back in.
Well, I guess the proxy of your question was, can some, does somebody, has somebody, or would somebody just rent those common areas outside the auditorium only?
Yes.
We have a pricing schedule for it.
Or they might have that event before having an audience event within the theater as well, you know, they may have a concert afterwards, they might have, like I said, just kind of even appetizers and kind of a...
But specifically, Lake City Music Festival, for example, they do a gala, where they do, like, a concert, and you can buy tickets to the concert, or the dinner, or books, so you can come and go to the dinner where they're serving alcohol, and then go home, I don't know why you would do that, but you could, or you can buy the combo ticket, and then you can't drink, you can't take a drink into the theater until the auditorium starts.
And the primary reason we have that is we just, we haven't allowed food and beverages in auditorium yet, just do that.
It's pretty basic.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Director.
Do you have a lot of organizations that want to do this during the school year?
I've had a couple of requests this year, one is the JCs that run, is in February, the kickoff for their state fishing derby, and then I did have a request, possible request for an upcoming in October, that have a video on CLC or union.
I don't know where we're gonna go with option one or option two, but both of them contain the paragraph that I have some concerns with, that would be on the second page, it would be the third paragraph, of carry in and carry out, alcoholic beverage may be served, consumed, and possessed in the lobby, the mezzanine, the laboratories immediately adjacent to the lobby, and mezzanine areas, and the studio stage at GZ Center for the Arts, okay? My preference would be not to allow food or beverage taken in the laboratories. Why? Now we got supervision, I mean, the lack of, you mind if somebody need to take a drink to do a bathroom?
You're in the waiting seat?
That's different. That's different.
I'm not sure why we're doing it like that the first time.
Page two of the, not carry in and carry out, let's say, carry in and carry out.
The second concern I have is, how many mezzanines are there?
The mezzanine is kind of upstairs lobby.
Is there a mezzanine on the lower level?
It's just a lobby down there.
Okay, but there's a mezzanine on the upper level, okay?
It's a large space.
Okay, is that, if someone wanted, I mean, all we're saying here is, these are the areas that can, we can serve, consume, and possess. Obviously, I don't think we're gonna be serving upstairs in the mezzanine.
Actually, we've used that space a few times, because it's so large, it's kind of a reception area, so...
So nothing's held downstairs, then? I guess my point is, if we have so many different areas of the GZ where people are gonna be able to carry and possess alcohol, that's gonna take extra, extra manpower as far as, I'll just throw that out.
Right, usually the area can be packed or down, depending on the event, if they do it downstairs, they typically can do it out of the...
The studio stage, that's on the lower level, right?
That's the black box, the big square theater.
Okay. That's a wood floor in there, right?
No, it's a, I don't even know what it's called. It is a floor that would need to be covered in order to have beverages in there.
So wood be covered.
We don't usually allow food and beverage in that space, we have to put on a special floor cover.
Okay, so maybe that can be looked at then in this as well. I'm just concerned about, you know, where and how they can possess them. Because it's probably gonna be served on one occasion, people are gonna walk around, you know, and then there's probably potentially a lack of supervision. That's my only concern, is lack of supervision.
One of the main functions of security, in the way that they operate at those events, is to supervise children, because our bigger concern is really access beyond the permitted areas. So if you think about the doors over to the left, when you come in the front lobby, they go directly into the catering or whatever it is of the high school proper, right? So the idea is to restrict access to that, and then the other is to monitor all of those other areas, so I guess I don't know that I necessarily share your concern about restaurants, per se, but because the security is kind of monitoring those, you know, making sure people aren't taking it out onto the sidewalk, into the auditorium, into the high school, or deeper in on that bright side, it's active, or like the music rooms and stuff like that.
Put a migrant possess the alcohol in the laboratory given to them by the doctor.
Well, if you define minor as under 21, they can possess it anywhere in the entire public space, and always running around guarding people.
No, that would be the job of a caterer.
Well, that speaks more broadly to the name point of the, to cater or not to cater debate, which is really the difference between these two proposed options.
So what kind of money are you talking about to me? How often do you rent this out, or is it pretty much just the Lake City Music Festival is why we're going through all this, spending all this time?
It's not primary, you know, there was once we came to the board...
You think you're gonna rent it out two more times this year, other than the... That's interesting.
I think you have a chicken and an egg situation, we don't know, because we restricted it, we don't know who would come forward. Now, given what we know, there's a fairly limited pool of organizations that can rent it, because you have to be a nonprofit. because you have to be a nonprofit and you have to have your headquarters in the city of Brea.
Well, we didn't build it to be in the rental business, right? I mean, I was involved in deciding to build it, but I would think that if you want to take care of it in Hall's Tornstone, in Lake, in Hall's Tornstone, right?
What's the question, sorry?
Tornstone Auditorium Hall is it?
Twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty-nine, so, yeah.
So it's almost 100 years old, but I think it's been used. But it's a nonprofit, so I guess I just kind of, I wouldn't, I'm not trying to talk problems. I just am wondering, is this really, I mean, maybe we're too much effort than this. It's just Lake City Music Festival problem, so, hold on.
I think, well, to me, fundamental...
I think it's definitely going to be forward.
The fundamental argument is whether somebody motions to do option one or option two. And so the debate to me becomes about the caterers' needs. And so from my perspective, as you mentioned in talking to our insurance carrier, you know, I'm torn because on one hand I don't like the cost prohibitive nature of having to have it in place for these other non-JC's events because they actually don't even break even by serving alcohol at their events, which sounds like a not charging too much for your drinks problem, but. But on the other hand, I like the added layer of liability protection by having people who are trained to watch for over-serve people or whatever doing. And then of course the maintenance aspect, and you can chime in on this too, of having licensed caterers that know how to clean up after themselves and get everything out and in, in a timely and safe manner without leaving something behind and that kind of stuff. So what I would say is where I lean on it is to require the, require the caterer to your point, Director Donner, here. And if that limits it to two rentals a year, it limits it to two rentals a year, but I personally rather have the added layer of liability protection. That's kind of my take on it. But, I mean, I'm not, it's not the only thing to die for. Other discussion?
Yeah, and we do know what the, just, you know, kind of follow up with Randy. Do you know what the rationale was to include all those spaces?
I'm not sure about the laboratories part, but the, but the rest of them, I think, are just areas where people might, might have it, I guess, you know.
Might have a gathering?
Right.
Okay. And I think the, the studio space, somebody might just start gathering in that black box.
Yes.
And I think that was when we were putting it together, thinking about the language, we wanted to be very specific about where they could and couldn't. And so I think that's why laboratories was included. I think we were looking at language from other venues and they pointed out, oh, you're going to be people that come back and you don't want to guard the bathrooms necessarily, but I'm just waiting in line and, well. But it does save second chances.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I was talking to a citizen the other day, you know, we're always looking for resources, financial resources in particular, and I just have to give kudos to Tim, I don't know Tim's last name, the guy that runs the Gigi. What, what? He does a remarkable job doing that. And he's got a lot of contacts and he's got a lot of ways to bring activities to this beautiful resource that we have. So I'm kind of, I'm torn between the two as well. I like option one better than option two, but, but it is a, the citizen said, you know, we're always, we always are education short of dollars and this could be a significant money raiser for us, especially with, Tim, Tim. I don't know anything about Tim, but this person said he has lots and lots of connections to be able to bring some venues in.
Now, one thing to keep in mind is any of those, let's say these are performing acts, touring companies, whatever, they're all for profit, so the alcohol policy doesn't apply at all. They're not eligible to serve alcohol in this space. By state law, you have to be a nonprofit to, to use or to serve alcohol in any public school property. And by city council law, you have to be a nonprofit headquarter in Brea to do it.
Okay, my only point was, you know, I, I don't want to handcuff ourselves too much in order to maybe have that as a, as a financial resource. I mean, to DJ, to represent, Director Donner, your point, you know, it wasn't built to, for a rental. It was built for community, environmental, community use, and we're doing that greatly, but we have an opportunity maybe to, uh...
Oh, I totally misunderstood, you were saying protecting the resource. Got you.
Yep, yep.
I, I love seeing that space being used, I love all the activity in there and all the assortment of activities that happen there. And I agree that there's not a really good way to transfer that liability right now. I'm not feeling extraordinarily comfortable with allowing people to have their own beverage service this fall. And knowing that we're going to be just in this meeting here.
Right.
It would be interesting to see if through this change of being able to offer, you know, having alcohol in the building for extended months, if that makes a difference in the kind of activity that we see or interests that we see and then maybe from there, they can move out. And even, you know, looking at the language, it's, it puts the onus on whoever is looking back group to say, and it feels like do we trust this group to be responsible, to have procedures of their own in place, to bring stuff in and out? And I am not comfortable putting someone in that position, but they'd be liable for that decision.
Mr. Chair, I'll move option one.
Exactly.
We have a motion from Director Ward with a second from Director Hayden to approve option one to expand the alcohol sales window year-round versus summer months with catering. Any further discussion?
I just want to make a comment that, a little bit, you know, we talked about this last month, but this is not for school-sponsored events and I think that we need to make that clear. This is for nonprofit community people to come in. So we are not sanctioning a school-sponsored events service. I think that's some community outreach about, concerns about that, so I just think we need to make that clear.
Quick clarification, sir. Can you further discuss?
Clarification.
Director Hayden?
Where is the money for the rental? Be it. And so what kind of dollars, I mean, I know this is off topic, because this was all before I was on board, but I'm interested. Where does that, so that goes to community ed then? First of all, what kind of dollar are mostly talking about? Maybe it's a hundred and fifty thousand a year, like, or if Ward said, well, we can make some money on this, or we're talking ten thousand dollars a year? Does it make a big difference to me? And then number two is, is what is community ed doing with money? Is that they'll pay for your, for your apartment or?
So it helps pay for staff for that space.
So is that staff cleaning? Do you guys clean it up then when it's done?
We usually pass on custodial fees to the end user. We have, we pay for Tim Calvert to be there as the manager and we also have a couple of, you know, parking people that come in and help for events. We try to pass that cost on to the user when we can, but salary and benefits for that space. We probably are looking at about, last year, I'm working on kind of my annual report, at about seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars that were collected for facility fees.
Times with the summer restriction?
For the station?
The one we're looking at, eliminating it?
For the alcohol.
For the alcohol, yeah, but that's year-round, people like music generally use me as a sample.
And, and coming into this fall, we have a lot of shows planned. October is extremely busy, we have some new things coming. So I foresee that increasing somewhat, but the more we increase the usage of the space, the more we're going to need to...
Pay your...
Yeah, upstaff, you know, and rate maintenance. So that's something we need to work on as a district, like our long-term plan. So we kind of have like a five-year kind of plan for that space, but.
So you charge to do for cleaning and you hire outside cleaners or we have our cleaners to do it?
We have our custodial.
So then does the money go to community ed or does it go to long-term facility managers?
We get charged for...
Oh, you get charged in an apartment?
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense.
And, and if the, if the custodians are working outside of them, there's something in their contract about what they get paid. So we try to...
Do you think it, do you think that you made money?
Well, we need...
Well, if you charge seventy thousand, most of the time, if you spend half of that on staff and cleaning and all those things, it's going to be a profit?
Not yet.
Okay, well, I think if you run out then, if it's not going to make a profit, why wear it out? That's it? We're going to wear it out, it'll be it, and we're going to be sitting around like a free girl. We're not going to be, it'll be fifteen years from now, it looks like we're not supposed to be around here. Maybe, but somebody's going to figure out how to pay it, fix it all back up. So unless we're going to make a profit, then it may not succeed. So anyways, the motion, you have a second? I'm done, sir.
Director Hayden?
One last comment. Maybe, I, I know we're talking about revised policy nine oh two and just the appendix eight. It may be moved to bring this up at the next long-range planning committee, discussing the regular policy nine oh two because we've talked, been talking about a lot of fee income, et cetera. That would be probably better suited for you guys to talk in the committee and maybe bring back to the full board some recommendations.
I'd love that, because that's you two, right?
Both of us.
Yeah. I'd like to understand that process a little bit better between the two of you and between them to, so we all, because remember, I mean, veteran, two and a half years.
I got my agenda from Janet for the September twentieth meeting, so I'll add it to that.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? Well, hearing none, then all those in favor of the motion signify by say nine?
Aye.
This is the take.
This is to do option one?
Keep the caterer.
Okay, that is, motion passing unanimously. Thank you, Andrew. Next up, approval of the first, approval of the first and final reading of MSBA policy number five oh six presented by Dr. Hunt.
This is section five oh six point one. So you have adopted, through legislative changes, we have a very extensive student discipline policy, policy five oh six. Five oh six point two is actually the template of a suspension form. In the new legislation, it requires a discipline complaint procedure form. And so that's what you had, that was what was neglected to be attached to that policy. The basis of this policy is basically, so if you can complain about the discipline that's been issued, the complaint can happen if you do not feel that the procedure was followed appropriately or if it was discriminatory in manner. So if this is approved, we'll go back and train our administrative team and make sure that they fully understand. When you see the portions that are in this, in this form that were very detailed out in policy five oh six, those have been steps and measures that we've been following all along. There's some very critical issues with that policy.
So there's nothing new?
No, so for obvious reasons, that's why we chose to make this first and final instead of taking it through a...
Having a complaint form was due. So it's making sure that the Fair People Dismissal Act is given to the, to the guardian of the student that they're being suspended, it's making sure there's detail of that suspension. So it's ensuring that that procedure is followed. If I feel that it wasn't followed appropriately or that something was violated in that process or if I feel that it was discriminatory, I can file a complaint form that goes to the administrator of that building. The administrator will look at it, maybe the superintendent gets involved, responds to that complaint. The whole process then of how we track those events.
So does it play any by the student, the parents or the superintendent?
It's made by the guardian and potentially the student that they're, they're structured.
But we're going to send them the student bill rights and this is the form they fill out if they're not happy about the way things went.
This is the form they fill out if they feel that we did not follow the discipline procedure outlined in policy five oh six. The formal written complaint form. They can't be upset, let's say, I don't know what you did, excuse me. They get the worst attention right during our catch phase.
I was afraid to tell my parents today if anything happened, I was just going to take this game.
Uh, so there's some type of disciplinary action where the student is suspended for the day. So as the administrator, if they need that student, they write up a suspension form and they give a copy of the Fair People Dismissal Act, they follow all the steps in the procedure. If I did already feel that there was a misstep, this allows me to file a complaint. Or if I feel you're targeting my child for discriminatory, discriminatory fashion, I can also file this.
There you go.
So it's reiterating our procedure, allowing a process for somebody to express their complaint on page two and then follow it to the on page three.
So I think the motion, we approve the first and final reading of MSBA policy five oh six point one.
Second.
Motion from Director Breckin with a second from Director Ward to approve first and final reading of MSBA policy five oh six point one form as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by say nine?
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries.
Okay, I feel like we think we've had this discussion, but we have because this will be, Jen and I have kept track. I think this might be the fifth time we've had to present this policy. We were almost near the end of the third and final reading, but there were a couple of changes made. So now this is again the third and final reading on the overdose medication. Remember the original, there was a change where it wasn't provided, now it's provided. Since the first reading, we've had no other questions, concerns, clarifications, so it remains the same. So this will be the third and final reading of the new policy five oh six point five.
Please.
Second.
We have a motion from Director Donner with a second from Director Breckin to approve the third and final reading of MSBA policy five sixteen point five as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by say nine?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to committee meeting updates with a very fresh finance committee meeting. The ink isn't even dry yet, so I'll hand it over to you, Director Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did have a finance meeting at four o'clock today and there were a couple of celebration things. The, we submitted the first grant application to Minnesota Education Grant System for one point, one point four million, right, Marc? One point four? And it's in, it's in the queue, it's in the queue and so we're hopeful. We also talked about, is that, Jeff, Jeff, oh, there he is. We still had a discussion about the concession stand dollars and using them for projects and reviewed that whole process and came up with a consensus to have Jack take care of that for us, right?
Got it.
All right. Then we reviewed a whole bunch of policies that were pretty much MSBA templates. The only, there was one new one, I think, on vending machines, was it, pardon? Yeah, vending machines. And so we reviewed that and, but there was no disagreement with any of that, right, DJ?
No.
So then we moved on to the preliminary budget presentation that we heard tonight from Marcy. Did a great job with that. And then we talked about the strategic planning for finance and legislative, for the legislative. There were three things that we talked about at that, the SRO contract. This is, this is potential future legislation that, that we as a board had, had talked about at committee meeting and hasn't been presented to the full board yet, but the SRO legislation and then free meals legislation and then all education organizations working together to come up with a concise and agreeable legislative session agenda for the next legislative session. Anything else, DJ, that I left out?
I don't think so.
And then that was it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director Ward. All right, let's move on to informational and we'll go first up in Sarah Spear with the Greater Public Schools Foundation report.
This one's fresh too, it's kind of set in. And it was more of an organizational meeting to kind of get together with the new, to get, get out of the school year. So we have some potential new members in the room and we had a few officers as well. And some of the discussion was around the Warrior Warren program. So if you run over to the greater, you can, you should also gently use warrior gear for homecoming. Lots still available and you can order some of the new gear online. That's up and ready to go as well. And the date for being a fundraiser on December fifteenth. And the group is looking at some ways to streamline sponsorship opportunities for community partners and businesses that stay tuned for some really great videos.
Thank you, Director Spear. Next up, Director Breckin, do we have anything? I've never met, we meet this week.
Tomorrow.
Correct? So I think the update from the Equity Task Force this month is there is no update, correct? Wonderful, great job, Director.
Thank you.
Chair would be proud of you for that. All right, next item up is the follow-up on the school board complaint from July tenth, twenty twenty-three. Obviously, we had a couple of community members speak about this tonight. Just to update the public on where we're at with this, since we did receive a written notice of complaint from a community member, Director Spear, myself, and Dr. Han undertook what I guess we could call an investigation. I think that's probably a pretty heavy-handed word for what took place since we were all sitting here on July tenth, and the meeting was recorded. And so the investigation, just from a transparency perspective, I think it's important that I talked you through what we did. Before we do that, I would like to actually give the floor to Director Hyman, who has a statement that you would like to make. And then I'll expound on the process that we followed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was the one who made the statement. And I welcome the discussion by the public on this issue. I've had a lot of time to reflect on that statement that I made at the July tenth meeting. And basically, it was in response to Director Boils, who had made a comment regarding that the largest percentage of families that have started the homeschool, their children across the nation are African Americans. To which I promptly stated, that's because they can't read. I own those words. And I'll remember them for how long I sat on the school board, and even after. The statement was not well thought out, and it was hurtful, so. In the future, I am going to be choosing my thoughts and words more carefully. What I did is I failed to provide context to that statement. Okay? And it's, it's just not regarding black children, it's, for that matter, all children across the nation. They're not reading at proficiency. And we've had many discussions about this in committee meetings and board meetings. And I, I know the one policy committee meeting, Director Ward, I think you'll remember, I kind of, I didn't get hot, but man, I was really on the science of reading. So this is something that is very important to me as well. They're not reading to proficiency, not because they can't. It's possible that some of the curriculum is not updated. Perhaps some teachers have not had the proper support and training in literacy. And perhaps children don't feel safe in school. So those are all important things. Unlike speaking, children need to be taught to read. Teaching literacy is an art. Special training and qualifications need to be met to be a literacy teacher, which is in the case, within our district. We've got very qualified people that will be working with our literacy program. All children can be proficient readers with hard work, and a good teacher who supports them. One eighty-one has a literacy plan in place that was discussed at our August retreat, and it's designed to increase all of our students' reading levels. Staff has identified gaps that need to be addressed, and they're being addressed. And we look forward to seeing those results. This is a work in progress. It's not gonna happen overnight. One last final thought and comment. I received an email last week from a very concerned mother. She has two minority students. I'm paraphrasing. We can have the best teachers and curriculum in the world. However, if children don't feel safe in school, they won't learn proficiently. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hyman. So we're perhaps paying extra attention to this particular bullet point. One of the reasons I ran for the school board three years ago, I guess, was when we were campaigning for that particular election. There was a complaint made against a school board member back in the late twenty nineteen, early twenty twenty, and the board conducted a similar internal investigation, which essentially ended up stating that the board member was found to have done nothing wrong, but the process was never unveiled to the public, which I, I had a problem with as a community member. So I apologize if this is a little too much sausage making for some of you, but I felt it was really important. At least I'm passionate about the idea that people understand that we take these things seriously. So with that in mind, as best we could with such a, such an interesting situation where everything's on film, the process was the three of, the three of us, Dr. Han, Director Spear, and myself discussing this. I've had multiple conversations with Director Hyman. Dr. Han's had multiple conversations with Director Hyman. And, you know, at the end of it, what I would say is the outcome of the quote-unquote investigation is that Director Hyman is not guilty of anything, but some ill-timed words in a conversation that had several different streams of consciousness as it relates to context and subject matter. We were talking about declining enrollment. We were talking about people pulling their kids out of schools. And we were talking about literacy. Now, the public may not have understood that, so I can easily understand why somebody sitting out in the audience would have jumped to the conclusion that some of you did as it relates to Director Hyman's comments and/or his intent. But I've now known Director Hyman for nine months. I've sat next to him at this board table for nine months. And in some sense, I owe Director Hyman and Director Don Lerner both apologies, because I was not in favor of their candidacies back when they were running, based on things they were saying during the campaign. And both men deserved an apology before now, but I never could find an arena in which to proffer that apology without it seeming self-serving in some way. And this gives me the opportunity to finally say publicly what I've said to both of them privately. They're good board members. Director Hyman has nothing but the best interest of the children and the staff in this district at heart. Does he see the world differently than I do? Absolutely. Is he a racist? He is not. Or if he is, he's hiding it, and those comments are not reflective of that viewpoint whatsoever. If you know Director Hyman, you know what he was saying. The conversation was moving at all these different angles and paces. So I sit or stand, if you want me to stand, but I stand in support of Director Hyman. And he is clear to any allegations of wrongdoing, or ethics violations, or civil rights violations, or anything else somebody would care to levy in the interim. With that said, I'd like to open the floor to other directors to speak on the subject as well. Maybe start with me, Director.
Sure. You know, I think we always aim to be ethical with our words, and I never am. But I think we are always learning and we need to better. And I think the, the words that were spoken that night and that were potentially heard by students are hurtful. And I think that can be interpreted in lots of different ways. And I think there was no malicious intent behind them, knowing Director Hyman the way that I do, and, and the context for the conversation beyond this boardroom. And I am thankful for the explanation and for giving the opportunity to share that. And I do think it's important for us to counter, know whatever's out there in that commentary. But Brainerd is, will be a place of dis welcoming, and know where people belong, and where we can step and see people for who they are, and make sure that they're known, and make sure that they're celebrated. And I want that to be heard more often than the words that we heard the other day. So please make sure that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Thank you, Mr. Chair, and let me start just by saying, Ms. Paulson, right? And Mr. Erickson, I think he's, I don't know if he's still here or not. Thank you for your feedback and your input, and it's valuable. I also want to thank Director Hyman for taking ownership for what he said, and for his remorsefulness. And he has, he and I have talked, and I know that he is absolutely apologetic and remorseful for the words that he, that he said that night. I know, I know Randy for a long, for a long time. I've known his family, Randy, I've known his wife. Randy worked with a family member of mine, I've known his wife significantly from her occupation. I coached his kids. And this, this man, person, does not have a, in my opinion, racist bigot bone in his body, in my opinion. You know, I, and I, and I really do mean, I appreciate, I, you know, we all need to, we all need to be careful with our words, and me, me in particular included, for sure. And one of the things that Representative Hyman said to me during this whole discussion was, "Did you ever get yourself in a jam at the state legislature?" I said, "How many times do you want me to tell you?" "Yes." And, you know, we all make, we all make mistakes. We are all human beings, we all make mistakes. And, and as he reflected, as he said he reflected, he owned up to that mistake. I'm not a person of color, but I'm certainly a person of disability, and I'm different too. And we are all different. We are all made special and unique and different. And there is not, I am proud to serve with all of these folks. I am proud to serve with, have served as an educational person in this district. And I am just, I, I got an email that called all of us on the board big, bigots and racists. And that appalled me. If you know anything about all of us, we goof up, we make mistakes, we all do. And we say words that we probably shouldn't. And we own up, he owned up to it, and I am so proud of you for that, period. And we all maybe need to be more careful with our words. Not maybe, we all need to be more careful with our words. So I totally, I was sitting next to him, and I never thought anything about that comment. I should have. I'm not, I'm not excusing that. I should have, but I didn't. And I didn't know what was even going on until later, later on, that Hoppa pointed out to me what was going on with the process. But I just want to assure people, there is not a, in my opinion, there's not a racist or bigot on this board and in our, in our system. And we all are working hard, as Sarah said, for our children, for our kids, for our staff, and proud to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director Ward.
So
Director Don Lerner.
So I guess, I guess the word for me is that, is I'm a little disappointed. Because I've known Randy since I was a little kid at golf course, on the golf course with my dad, getting dropped off there to work, waiting for my ride home. But I've never thought of him as a racist. The sad thing to me is, is that we've got a hundred and eighteen million dollar budget. Director Ward's mad about literacy. I'm mad about the kids leaving the school. Fifty point three percent of Minnesota kids last year, in all grades combined, can't read at grade level, whether they're white, or any minority, or they're boys, or girls, or tall, or short, or fat, or skinny. That's nothing. But I don't see people coming up here demanding that our test scores get better. It's like we've gotten up in the weeds about this. It was a fast-moving conversation, I've watched it many times. I was shocked when I heard it, that there was a problem. I, I, I watched it over and over and over. And you're right, Director Ward was saying this, I was saying that, Kevin brought up the homeschool thing, it just kind of was all flying out of place. But the gist of the conversation was is that we've got to get our literacy program better. And the science reading is being passed by the legislature, and it's a breath of fresh air. And I think it's a big help to a lot of educators. And we met with elementary principals during our retreat, which I told Director Murtha and Han today, that really made me feel a lot better. And it seemed like they're excited about the new programs. We got a lot of good things going on, and I think you're gonna see a lot of improvements out of these kids, no matter who they are. And I didn't do this for my, you know, try to make myself a big deal. I did this because I'm really concerned about our little town of Brainerd, Minnesota. And with all these kids, I don't think we have much of a future. And I just wish that we could all keep our eye on the target, which is to help all these children. And, you know, especially the poor ones. Because married couples, there's a hundred different metrics that go into it, right? But it's proven fact that kids with strong foundations, whether it's grandparents, parents, whatever it is, aunts, uncles, it doesn't make any difference, brothers, sisters, will have better outcomes in the future. And this is their only opportunity to get this foundation that they need to get ahead in this world. There, it's, it's not easy out there, we all know it. And I just wish that all of us could just work towards the prize and not get hung up in the weeds on the comment that came out a little goofy. It's kind of how I felt the whole time. So appreciate you coming out. I'm definitely gonna pay attention to what I say, because I'm trying to lose cannon here that just says things fast. And I'll be thinking a little bit more about what I say, because I don't want to be misconstrued. And that's how I feel with what happened to Randy. And I think you're gonna see some, I think this is gonna be a good year. And I think we're gonna see some improvement. And hopefully, some of these kids that got affected by COVID are gonna have an opportunity to come out of it. And that's what I'd like to spend my time focusing on, is, is how to give a better experience to our staff, administrators, children, parents, and all those things that really are important about Brainerd Schools. So thanks for listening.
Thank you.
I probably have a lot more to add to what everybody said tonight. I appreciate Randy's vulnerability, and he is owning up to his mistake. When he first told me about it, my comment to him was, people need to know your heart, because that was not his intent at all. However, I do appreciate it being brought to our attention. I think we all need to do better and be better when it comes to our views on diversity and accepting people for who they are. We need to continue to work hard to make sure everybody feels that this is a place to hold on. I had to be back on what you were saying, DJ. I had the privilege of being at Love Field on the first day of school. And it was heartening to see the excitement on those students' faces and on those parents' faces. I believe that the parents were excited, because school was starting now.
I'm a bit shy about that, but.
And to see literally staff with open arms. And then after I left Love Field, I had the privilege of going over to Brainerd Learning Center, Jessica Hoppa, she gave me a tour. And the energy and positivity in that building, especially for our non-traditional students, was palpable. And so I think we, we aren't perfect. We made mistakes as a district, but we all need to acknowledge those mistakes. We learn from them, we should get second chances, that's what we want to give our kids, is another opportunity to try again to be better. But we, we still have work to do, but we care about this district, and I am privileged and honored to be a part of it.
All right, Director, Superintendent Han, Doctor, Director Tenen.
Director Tenen.
I'd like to give you an opportunity to speak about what you learned through the investigation, if you will.
Well, the one thing I appreciate is accountability. And so bringing that forward, and I appreciate people being willing to have the courage to have that discussion. You know, one of the things that we're collectively working on is unconscious bias. And so when we think about really anti-racism and the work that's going on to that, is being aware that we all have biases. And they play out at different times. And the thing that we need to do is grow. And so I'm very grateful that the discussions happened. I'm very grateful that the board is challenging themselves. As a matter of fact, I probably danced in my chair ten times already, because it is. Children are not gonna learn unless they feel safe. And so when we talk about belonging, right, so we want Brainerd Public Schools to be a place where every single So we want Brain and Learning Schools to be a place where every single student feels like they label on. They need to be seen, they need to be known, they need to be valued. And that's all part of it. And so bringing this to Director Hyman's attention, having the board be able to reflect on that, allows us to reflect on that unconscious bias piece, and challenges us to do better for all of us. I've been very grateful for the time that's been spent. And I know when I have the opportunity to talk to Director Hyman, he's like, I wish I could have spoken publicly sooner. But the fact that it was a whole board, the entire board's involved, can be very helpful. And so, I'm grateful for that, actually, I think.
Thank you, Dr. Han. And just kind of, you know, to put a period on it, accountability is the word that, that Dr. Han just used. And I think that, you know, that's really important. So those folks that spoke tonight, those folks that emailed either Director Hyman or other members of the board about this particular situation, take heart that, that was heard. And that this, what we learned through this process, which I didn't know before this process, is that the, the policing entity for board ethics is the board. Where, where, that we're, we're, we're sort of self-policed, for lack of a better way to put it, unless there's criminal activity. And so it's very important, at least from my perspective, that this play out in public fashion and that the public continues to feel empowered and encouraged to come forward. When any of us say something that you just kind of, whatever, right? You know, I would, I will tell you, I would watch every one of these meetings. I watch the recording at least once. It's usually all I can bear when I watch myself. And there has, I've been, probably thirty school board meetings since I've been on the board, and there's not a single meeting where something hasn't come out of my mouth during that meeting that I would go back in time and change if I could. Most of them weren't nuclear, right? There were little things that maybe I only noticed, or my wife notices, all that stuff. That was a joke.
Your wife says you fast-forwarded through the stuff you talked about.
So anyway, we appreciate the effort made by those of you in the community that did take this as a serious issue. It's understandable that people could see it the way that they saw it. But again, I have the privilege of working with these folks up here, day in and day out. And I'm going to tell you right now, you are more fortunate than you realize to have these five people to my right, the lefts, representing you up here. So with that said, we'll move on to the business services report from Marcy Ward.
So in your report packet is the first financial report for the year. The only thing I'm going to note is the debt service fund is higher, or less than it was last year at this time. And that's because of the interest and the payment card. So I need to question, we made payments in July of about four point two million. And then I did look at it quick, and then again, we'll make it an estimated seven, excuse me, eleven point nine million. So around sixteen dollars, that's our mortgage per day.
Is our general fund, hey, we've had that one too.
Yeah.
Is our general fund number low? Is everything just that low because it's July?
Yes. So you'll see in September.
Got it.
That's lower. The enrollment report, first one of the month. So I say this, these, these, you know, this is headcount, right? Nine, eight, twenty-three is headcount. And then the blue column is ADMs, so our attendance. So it's, it's apples and oranges, but we do like to track this. And I did a quick comparison. So we are, if you look at the first column, May first, twenty-three, that's our weekly last year. We are down ten kids. And I did the five-year average of the comparison of the two. Typically, the five-year average is twenty, so we're down twenty-one. So it's a little bit less. So that's good, right? And then we'll continue to track the overall amount each month, making more comparisons. Well, there we are compared to previous years. But as of right now, it's looking promising. Any questions on that? And again, if this number changes, you know, quite a bit next month, it's because we are, after the fifteen-day rule, we do have to drop students. So that'll come into play next month.
So here, I don't understand. It's ADMs. Kids count as one until sixth grade. And then seven to twelve, they count as one point two. So how could the ADMs be lower than the actual?
So if a student did on this report in September, but then leaves, they're not going to count as a one point oh. They're going to count as a point zero zero, whatever. So that's why I say we're comparing apples and oranges.
So your budget is what you budget. That really has, that, that blue column doesn't mean really anything.
Well, so we do try to track out to the end of the year what that could look like. But yeah, it's more of a.
The real numbers are the white numbers. I do. The blue is your budget, what you expected.
Yes.
We're doing better than you expected, so we should be happy. See? There's some good news around here.
She's learning to speak, DJ. Just one comment, I owe you a candy bar, because I've been begging for two years to be able to see this presented like this. And I love, I love to be able to see that, because I think in certain scenarios, we're concerned about the ADM, because that's where the funding is. But on the other hand, as we're dealing with community issues that come up, that are, you know, talking about what our enrollment's doing and not doing, the headcount's the important number, because that's demonstrating how many noses are going out and how many noses are coming in. And, and I think it's, again, it's important for people that are watching this to understand the distinction between the two. They're both important numbers, but they don't correlate to each other in any meaningful way.
And if there's ever any information you guys are wanting, I mean, these reports are, the financial report was developed on my first start. And so if there's something else that, you know, if you're a visual person, we added a graph. But if there's some other information you want on these reports, please don't hesitate to let me know.
Marcy, excuse me. But in May, the student count was two thousand thirty-two. And today, it's two thousand seventy-seven. I thought you said we lost students. We gained forty-something.
So that's nine through twelve in total. I'm looking at the K, or through twelve number.
All right, I see that, okay. I see, okay. Thank you. Thank you for it.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Marcy. Superintendent's report, Dr. Han.
Thank you. At the time, I think it's going to be a shorter agenda, look at us. But it's not, they give a shout, and it's been a great start to the school year. You know, we're in the week two, and like I said, that energy is still just palpable. I agree with Director Reckon. Having the privilege to be at buildings and watch kids and families come in is very exciting. And the staff is that energy. And once one of that energy is maintained and continued, so I'm super excited about where we're at. Looking at friend and transportation. They haven't canceled routes. We've adjusted a little. Oh, now she's giving me the look. We're working really hard. Riker's has been working diligently, because we continue to have a driver shortage. So lots of long hours, lots of creative solutions, but our goal is not to come anywhere near what we were at last year. So I've been very pleased with that. I'm also excited to introduce to you Carrie Ross, Carrie from the Wave. Carrie Ross is our new Director of Student Support Services. I've sent communications and some emails, but now you can put a face to the name and please. If you're from the community, get to know Director Ross. I want to give a shout out to John Erickson. John, like I keep challenging our community people to get involved and volunteer. Here's a challenge for you. John's volunteer hour is last month, we're a hundred and ninety and a half hours.
He did work that much in a half a job.
His wife is giving the thumbs down. So we're very grateful to John and all the work he's doing for us. Like organizing a homecoming for the concert. And then last but not least, I want to give a shout out to, I'm looking at Principal Russ. And I think, is Jack tucked in a corner somewhere? Nobody puts Jack in a corner.
I think he should stand up.
Yeah. Homecoming, coming up. But we are trying to start at grassroots and bring back the tradition of a homecoming parade and tailgating. And so thanks to some extra collegiate work of Principal Russ and Director Freeman, we are hoping to bring that to fruition. So it looks, September thirtieth, five PM. Twenty-eighth, sorry, the concert's the thirteenth. Twenty-ninth. It's a long night. Twenty-eighth is first rehearsal for the choir. Twenty-ninth is parade at five, storming the stadium, coming down for some tailgating. Homecoming game starts at seven, but we're going to watch some ninth grade football, because they'll be playing at the same game. My facts all pretty. And that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Han.
Thank you.
And now we're going to break some new ground. We've been having board retreats, as some of you know. We've done two of them. The last one was several weeks ago. We are hopefully going to do one coming up again in October. I don't want to put words in my fellow directors' mouths, but I'm finding those to be extremely productive and interesting sessions, where we really get to explore the boundaries of topics that were restricted in this environment. I, I think we should charge money for people to come watch them, because they're kind of fun. But actually, they are open to the public, and you can come to those. So as a result of the board retreat, was last meeting, Director Ward made a motion to allow for director comments at the conclusion of the meeting. We voted that three-three did not get approved. So we discussed it in the board retreat and have decided to give it a try. What could go wrong? So with that said, we're going to allocate time to each director tonight to make some comments before we wrap up our meeting for the evening. And I guess by the auspices of alphabetical order, it's me first.
Hey, boy.
Yeah, hey, okay. So three things that I would like to talk about, that kind of got touched on already tonight. Actually, two of them got touched on, one, just for the other board members' benefit, as opposed to the public. But these first two are more for you folks in the public. First, Director Ward, you brought it up today at the finance committee meeting. In addition to the letter that we want to send as it relates to the SRO issues and the legislation, one of the other issues that weighs pretty heavily, at least on several board members' minds, is the provision of free meals to all children in the schools and whether that's the best possible utilization of those resources. So it's something that we're going to look at at the next retreat and get a feel for what the entire board thinks about that as it relates to, is that a policy that we support as a board or not? The second, Dr. Han just touched on, which is the homecoming parade. There aren't too many things I get more emails about as a school board member than homecoming. Believe it or not. Talk about masks, we talk about books, we talk about all this stuff. I get more emails about homecoming every year than anything else. And we have all these people have all these great ideas for all this cool stuff. Let's bring it back. Someone will want us to get sledgehammers and smash a car. I don't know what that was all about. Seven children.
Nashville hockey.
Whatever it was, I'm like, yeah, the insurance adjuster, love that. But if you notice when Dr. Han was calling out how this parade was going to happen, she mentioned Jack Freeman, she mentioned Andrea Russ. And all these people, these well wishers from the community that have all these great ideas for bringing back these solid traditions of homecoming, seemingly are not able to be found at this moment in time, when it's actually time to sit at a table and plan this out. So if anything from tonight's meeting gets chopped into a Thursday segment and put out on Facebook, can we say, "Homecoming needs your help, people. Show up, get involved, reach out to Dr. Han, reach out to Superintendent Han, and let's, and Andrea Russ, and everybody else, and let's get involved." If you really want to see things come back to the way they were, or add some new wrinkles, show up and do it. Show up and do the work with us, and we'll be glad to say hello to you.
We have had four volunteers.
Oh, good. That's an update from the last time we spoke, so that's great.
You can think Mr. Erickson, and his hundred and ninety and a half hours, he's kind of recruited four, directed them over two.
It is saying four, you got to say.
And then my last comment for other board members would be that last year in November, I was privileged to be our representative at the delegate assembly at the MSBA legislative conference. And I would love to hog that again, because it was a blast and I had a great time. But I would ask each of you to look into a little and see if you would be interested in doing that and contact me and Dr. Han. What happens, just for the sake of everybody's knowledge, is we sent a representative down there. We have the opportunity to bring forward a particular topic. Like last year, the topic we brought up was a proposed change in legislation to the way that the statute is written around what happens when a school board resigns before their term is up, but the election cycle hasn't hit a certain threshold. There was this weird thing that we encountered when Director Nystrom resigned, that it created a very bizarre situation, that there were two conflicting pieces of language in the statute. One told you to do one thing, and one told you to do the other thing. So we just kind of did what we felt like doing, and nobody said anything, so we were good. But we, we asked for that. So it gives us the opportunity, send somebody down with that, and then they, they join school board members from all over the state. And what that happens at that conference is that MSBA pools all of those people together, and they identify what the legislative agenda items are collectively for metro schools and the rural schools. And they go and lobby the state legislature based on those, those items that are voted on by that assembly. And last year, the biggest one of those probably that resounded was local control. It was a big deal that they went back and continued to talk about, stop the unfunded mandates, give the local districts more power to control the dollars that come into the state, stop earmarking everything, so that we have all this money saved over here, that we can't touch for this, and vice versa. So it's stuff like that. So if anybody's interested in attending that, just let me and Dr. Han know, and we'll talk there. So those are my comments for this evening. All right, next up is Director Reckon.
And I was mostly just going to talk about my experience with the first day of school, but also to encourage people to contact building administrators, get in the buildings, and see the great things that are happening.
Thank you. Director Don?
I probably, Dr. Han. Get involved. Get after your congresspeople, get after, after all these politicians. They make a lot of promises. And, and then they get elected and they kind of do what they want. So this, some of these policies that they came down with this year are, they're not about left and right, they're about right now. And they need to hear. So if you have time, you have to put an email or something to your representatives and stuff, I think it really will hopefully make some differences, because we got to support our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Don. And Director Hyman?
I would also like to, after the first day, I was at Harrison with Principal Condon. It was a great day. I mean, these little, these little kids coming in. There was a couple of them, their backpacks were hanging all the way up to the floor, but they were just chugging in. It was really fun. And then I went out and saw Principal Hoppa Jope out at the DLC, the Brain and Learning Center. She didn't even rate her. It was, it was a blast. And I commented to Dr. Han, I said, "Whoever thought of this idea, it was brave." And she says, "We've been doing it for a long time." On a sad note, I had to send an email to John, because my wife and my son were both in choir. And I had commented, and he said, "Yeah, because I got my wife, and they're going to sing." Well, I was talking to my wife, "We will be out of town that day for a wedding." And I had sent him an email, and that, he says, "Well, I can understand, that takes precedence, but next year. Next year, John, come, they'll be there." And me, me too. I mean, I don't care about that too.
Next year, please do.
Maybe, maybe, or no, I can do so. Or, no, I do have. That's all I have.
I can run you my pastime.
I, I think the follow-up to Sonny and Cher should be Directors Don Blinger and Hyman doing like Laurel and Hardy or something. Just putting it out there. Director Spirit?
I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I did want to just celebrate as I look around this room. And I know some of you, you know, represent your buildings, so please bring enough people back. But six thousand kids waited simply at school. And, you know, it's a little less impressive, but most were running and looking for us. And it's just awesome to do that. And I have to say, I've been happy supporting them, as I've seen Jack, like walking the field, and walking the court. I almost called them. And Principal Russ was leading the cheers, mentoring the super fans at the volleyball game. It's just so cool to see all the love and care of our staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Director Ward?
Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you. First of all, Mr. Baller, I know he's left, but today is nine eleven. And I'm glad that he brought that up, because three thousand people lost their lives that day. And since then, three thousand more have lost their lives and will still lose some more. Let's never forget nine eleven. So I just wanted to make that comment. I also want to make a comment about homecoming and activities. And the one thing that Dr. Han included all of them, there is a homecoming run on September tw- September twenty-third. September twenty-third?
Thank you.
And you don't have, I don't run, I walk now. But, but participate. Director Donner said it well, get involved. So there's a homecoming run on the twenty-third. First week report that I received, a bit unbelievable. The welcome back was unbelievable, not just because of two particular crazy people, but anyhow, the whole welcome back, Dr. Han and the whole staff that put that together, was remarkable. Absolutely remarkable. And I have, my colleagues that I've worked with for thirty-four years, every one of them, many of them have told me, "It was the best one they've ever attended." Best one, so thank you for that. I too had the privilege of going to Garfield, no, Riverside. Riverside. Michelle, I'm sorry. Riverside, and I want you all to know that Dylan, Dylan from Riverside is there and alive and doing well. He gave me a high three. He gave me a high three, Dr. Han, he was awesome. But it was great, it was just like everybody said, it's been great to see that enthusiasm, those smiling faces, and those anxious faces, and the tears from the parents, and some tears from the kids. So elementary principals, I want you to know how appreciative all of us board members are for your presentation on literacy. It was remarkable, it taught us a lot, it was, it was really, really, really well done. Thank you for that. And one more thing, we have a, a award here in the district, and you're gonna have to, Above and Beyond?
Above and Beyond.
Huh?
Above and Beyond.
Above and Beyond, Above and Beyond, and Janet Horn, and Carrie, Carrie Campion, and Diana Holbrook were the recipients this year, and I think we should give them another one.
Karen, I make a motion to make a timer on Ward.
Mr. Chair, I timed you and me, and I was four minutes shorter, I just want you to know that.
Just real quick, we'll recap upcoming meetings, finance committee meeting today, regular school board meeting tonight. September twelfth, Battle of the Looks grand finale, three o'clock here at Forest View. September fifteenth, Armed Forces Tribute at the Corwin County Historical Courthouse, at one o'clock. September twentieth is the Next Long Range Planning Committee, twelve-thirty here at Forest View. The Curriculum and Instruction and Staff Development Committee, the next one's on September twenty-seventh at noon here at Forest View. And finally, our next regular school board meeting, October ninth, over at the new Wesbie Remodelled Boardroom. So now, Director Don.
Mr. Chair, wait a minute, Mr. Chair, I forgot one thing, I'm sorry. And I was at the Lincoln Education Center as well, on OP, and Principal Jordan, and it's a remarkable. If you've never been to a facility that really does remarkable things with, with students that need help, need support, need love, need caring, just like at the Alternative Center, it is remarkable. So I, I just wanted to point that out, that I forgot about the Lincoln Education Center, and I just, you know, we've got you. We've got you, so let's go.
Thank you, Director Ward. We have a motion, Director Don, you're to adjourn.
Second.
Director Spear got in under the wire with the second. Any discussion? All of us in favor of adjourned, deny?
All right.